Good evening, thank you for coming tonight. This is the Parent Club Information Council Candidate Forum for November 2014. I would like to introduce our PCIC president, Ellen Gould, who will be moderating tonight's event.
You need to put the mic on.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you, Monica. And welcome applicants, thank you for joining us this evening. On behalf of the Livermore Parent Community, I would like to welcome our school board applicants, Superintendent Kelly Bowers and colleagues, school board members, district staff, and guests to the PCIC Candidate Forum. I would like to thank Superintendent Bowers and Donna Guyer for hosting this event, giving us the facilities for us tonight, and forum committee members Monica Bakke, Roxanne Cuskey, and Lisa Valverde. Just so you know, this forum is being videotaped and will be streamed with a link on the district website. Our understanding is sometime in the middle of next week, probably Wednesday. So those not in attendance will have the opportunity to listen to the candidates as well. And please feel free on your way out to take a flyer that each of the candidates was given the opportunity to bring to this event tonight. The Parent Club Information Council, who created the question for tonight's events, is comprised of parent leaders from parent groups from each of the seventeen school sites in the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District. The purpose of our group is to collaborate through the sharing and exchange of information with LVJUSD. And what we do is we help to move forward the common goals in supporting the educational needs of all students. This evening, we are here to provide and moderate an open forum for nine residents who have submitted applications for one two-year term and three four-year term board seats. The candidates with the blue name place cards are running for the two-year seats, and the candidates with the gold place cards are running for the four-year seats. We do have two applicants not in attendance today. Our utmost gratitude and appreciation goes out to the candidates who have stepped up and are willing to take on such an important role in our community. We hope through this forum, the Livermore community will learn and understand the interests, experiences, and educational perspectives of these applicants, and the applicants will glean information about the parent community as well. The forum format will entail seven questions, with each applicant being allowed a minute and a half to answer each question. Questions will be displayed on the screens, there's four screens throughout the room, and answering order will be determined by Lisa Valverde, who will draw a number prior to each question, with that candidate beginning the round. If time allows, after all applicants have answered question seven, we will open the floor for the audience to ask questions to specific applicants. Applicants, I would now like to introduce Roxanne Cuskey. Roxanne will be our timekeeper this evening. Roxanne will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining for response. Roxanne will then show a red card when your time is up and state, "I'm sorry, but the time is up." I will then ask the next applicant to begin, or Lisa will draw to see who begins the next question. We ask that you be as spontaneous as possible with your answers. If you agree with another applicant's response who answers before you, that's fine, but we would appreciate hearing your personal views as well. And finally, if you need a question repeated, all you have to do is ask. Applicants, do you have any questions? Okay, so with no further ado, Lisa, can you draw and tell us who begins question number one?
The candidate starting this round of questions will be Kate Runyon.
Kate Runyon, okay. Question number one, it's basically a self-introduction. Please include how you are personally and professionally connected to LVJUSD.
I began my association as a parent volunteer. We moved here in 1998, and I had both of my kids at Portola, and then they moved on to Junction. I was on school site council and a member of the Education Foundation at the time. Those who are around in the early 2000s remember the financial crisis from then, and I founded the Dollar a Day campaign, and we raised a lot of money through the Education Foundation to restore some programs in the school district. So I've had two terms on the Board of Education, and that's my association with the school district.
Bellia? Ms. Martinez, I'm sorry.
My association personally with Livermore School District is, I do have two children in the school district currently, in elementary and middle school. We were also, I had my children enrolled in Portola, and they went through the DI program, which is a dual immersion bilingual program, and then the schools merged and they went on to Junction. Professionally, my association with the school district is, I was a community liaison between the school and the families to assist with the needs of the community that had children that attended the district. I also put in many volunteer hours assisting with the footsaw program that was developed at Junction for underprivileged youth that couldn't afford to participate in the sport. And footsaw, it's like an indoor soccer, for those of you may not be familiar with it, as well as the mariachi club that is still in existence. I coordinate that for the students that participate, starting at seven years old and up through high school. It is open to the entire school district, and my children now also are part of the IB program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
My name is Mac, and I actually began my career as a math instructor here in Livermore. I was hired a couple of years ago, 2005, and I taught math at the East Avenue Middle School. And it was there that I got inspiration after I left to form my own individual math ministry. I call it the A-Train Math Ministry. It began when one parent contacted me online and wanted me tutor their children in math after school. And I saw such a great need that I expanded, and it kept going, and I built up. And so it developed kind of of its own, and I still do that today. It requires me sometime to go into schools, talk with teachers, coordinate what I do, get student background, find out what the teacher is teaching, how they're teaching, and then adapt my instruction to the needs of students. And I continue to do that today, and I anticipate doing it in the future for other residents of Livermore.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez?
Well, I ended my teaching career here at Livermore Joint Unified School District after fourteen years. Elementary school teacher at two schools, Portola and Smith Elementary, as a classroom teacher. EL liaison, extra assignment I had at Smith. I have two boys at Mendenhall Middle School, attending sixth and eighth grade, and plan to help out as much as I can there, either through the intramural program, the academics or whatever, because as I go to Mendenhall daily, I see a lot of parents helping, but I also see the need for me to continue, even though not as an employee, but as a parent volunteer, as a teaching professional, tired, to continue with my association with the school district. And that's how I'm associated with it.
Thank you very much. Ms. White?
I came to Livermore with two little boys in 1982, and became active when they both became an active parent when they both were in school. I was a leader in Lagits, which was a parent support group which offered after-school classes. And at one point, there was an opening because a school board member was moving out of town. So I applied for that position in March of that year and was not accepted. But the more I thought about it, the more I thought, why not run in the fall? And nobody could say why not. So I ran in the fall, and I was successful. And of course, the first thing we did that next January was cut ten percent out of the budget. And then we cut ten percent out of the budget at the early 2000s, then we cut more out of the budget in the early, late 2000s, as we're coming along. And I've been around it, I've experienced the cuts, I've experienced the results of the cuts, and I think that I will, I ask the hard questions, I just don't ask them in public sometimes. I ask the staff, why are we doing this, and why do you think it's a good idea for our district? And I think that I would like to continue to add my insight and experience into serving on the board.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bueno?
Yes. Yes, my wife and I have been here in Livermore for thirty years. We have three adult sons now. They all went to school here. They went to Sunset, Mendenhall, and Granada. All of them were accepted into UC Berkeley. It looks like it's on. Close enough? Should I start again? Okay. So our kids were all accepted into UC Berkeley and UC Davis. They all graduated on time. They all had really strong degrees, molecular biology, economics, poli sci, double major with psychology. My wife and I put a lot of emphasis into education, and we were very active participants throughout their schooling here in Livermore. I served two terms on school site council with a very talented principal, Janet Lofgren Smith, who also assisted us with the recent Measure G. I've coached for fifteen years as a volunteer and haven't accepted any pay as a school coach. I currently am in my eleventh season coaching at Granada High School. I've also coached at Mendenhall, did four years as a wrestling coach also at Granada. We had a couple undefeated seasons there. I currently work six days a week as a volunteer coach, coaching football, as a JV coach, where I act as a mentor to some of these young men, and it's been a really rewarding experience. Recently, I mentioned a little bit earlier, that I co-chaired Measure G with Chris Wenzel, who unfortunately, he's a very good man, he couldn't be here tonight due to a commitment. He's retired police chief out of Danville. We were successful in bringing in approximately twenty-eight million dollars in our schools to help fund STEM and reduce class sizes, and that was solely due to the overwhelming support of this community, the PTAs and the PTOs, and business. I've been live-scaned, I've met every requirement to work with your children, and I've done so for about fifteen years now.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
Hello, and thank you very much, Ms. Gould, for having, inviting me here. Oh, this is interesting. I was kind of very involved within the public schools within Livermore, mainly on the other side. My sons both attended the Livermore Charter School and as well the Charter High School. I was very involved with both schools, volunteering. I served on the foundation at the LVCS, the K-8. We raised about, around three hundred thousand plus a year, as well as being involved within the parent-teacher-student group at the Charter High School. I was kind of there at the high school, where I met a lot of folks, or re-met a lot of folks who are, their sons had gone, or their sons and daughters had gone to other schools. The Mendenhall and Christiansen, as well as I knew that many charter students had gone to Granada in Livermore, and kind of started looking things a little differently, how we're more interrelated and such. And so when I saw that the Measure G was up for renewal, I thought that would be a great time to kind of get more closely involved with the district and really help drive the charter involvement within the Measure G parcel tax renewal. It was very successful, brought a lot of volunteers, a lot of financial support as well. I hope to continue that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. A real quick technical, so we don't have the questions coming up on the screens?
Oh, the predictors are set off.
Okay, so if any of you, you know, as we go around, if you want me to repeat the question, please don't hesitate to ask me to repeat the question, we do apologize for that.
So I'd like to read Chris Wenzel's statement at this point.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
So Chris Wenzel is a candidate, he is, has applied for the two-year seat. He couldn't be here tonight because of a trip that he had planned, that he was unable to reschedule, but he did send a statement that we'd like to read. Dear parents and concerned citizens, I would have appreciated the opportunity to meet with all of you and answer your questions this evening, but unfortunately, I had a previous trip arranged. For those who do not know me, my name is Chris Wenzel, and I am running for trustee for the two-year seat on the LVJUSD Board. I'm a seventeen-year resident of Livermore, and my son attends Mendenhall Middle School, and my daughter attends Granada High School. My wife and I truly enjoy this community, and for most of my life, I have been a service-oriented individual. After twenty-six years in law enforcement, seven and a half years as a chief of police, I have gained the experience of problem-solving, service delivery, and developing partnerships to improve a community's quality of life. Since my retirement, I volunteered our schools for special events, coached at Mendenhall and at Granada, coached for CYO and Granada Little League, where I am also a board member. This past summer, I completed a program that will bring in an excess of thirty thousand dollars to the Granada Little League baseball program. I am also the vice president of the One Hundred Club of Contra Costa County that supports the families of police officers and firefighters killed in the line of duty. Recently, I was a co-chair of the Measure G parcel tax campaign that was successful, and now will bring two-point-eight million dollars to the school district for the next seven years. Oh, three-point-eight million dollars, excuse me. As you can see, I am very involved with improving the quality of life for a community, and I would like to bring this skillset to the Livermore Valley School District and this community. Some of my goals are: to provide a safe environment at our schools for our children; to continue to improve on the quality of our education and prepare our children for college and other career goals; to develop partnerships with local businesses and to improve on our quality of education and sports programs; to modernize our facilities, utilize solar power and other recycling methods; and to capture as many financial opportunities as possible locally and from the state of California. With some of the endorsements I have already received, Mayor John Marchand, Alameda Sheriff Greg Ahern, Contra Costa Sheriff David Livingston, Livermore School Teachers Association, LVJUSD Board Trustee Bill Dunlap, I believe as they do that I am a worthy candidate and that I can bring a positive change to our school district. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and it would be an honor to serve you. Best regards, Chris Wenzel.
Thank you, Monica. So we're going to draw for the next first speaker for the second question, right? No, there's not a question yet. Yeah. Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, the candidate starting this round of questions is Alan Heckman.
Okay. So the question number two, what do you see as the top priorities for the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District? And why do you believe these to be priorities?
Well, I think the top priority, first of all, is for any district, and that's to make sure that the kids, when they leave the school, so they graduate from the high school, and they're ready for a college or a career. That's kind of what the schools are for, in any school district. I think, looking at the methods of obtaining them, you can't wait until you look at a kid when they're in high school to see if you're going to accomplish that. You have to, it actually, college preparedness begins in kindergarten, I feel, because, you know, a middle school needs to prepare a child for high school, elementary school has to prepare the kid for middle school, kindergarten has to prepare the child for elementary school. So I think really looking at, monitoring each child, making sure that they don't fall behind at any point, is definitely a high priority to achieve the goal of producing children who are college-ready. Also, another point of that is to obtain resources. Livermore does not get as much money per child as Pleasanton does. We thought that would happen, but it really hasn't, it's getting closer, but that's another point that I think is very important, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Runyon?
Well, I agree, the top priority has got to be the education of the kids. That's the whole point of everything. And then the question becomes, what specifically can you do that impacts that education for the kids? And, you know, governing is about making decisions. You have to decide what you're not going to do before you can decide what you're going to do. And so it's choosing, it's choosing priorities. And I think one of the top priorities for us has got to be to continue to recruit and retain the very best in employees. We're in a competitive market, and we've had difficulty in the past because we've been able to be outbid for every employee that we've wanted by district. So we had to, we had to be able to compete on things other than just finances. We come close on finances, but we were, we became a very much functional district that people wanted to work for, and that's demonstrated by the employees putting us up for and us getting a top workplace award for several years in a row. Now, we lost it this last year, but I'd like to see it back. We've got to keep our finances in a sustainable path. We've got to work on balancing the needs of paying employees and program versus meeting obligations that we've incurred in the past, and I want to give pensions as an example of that. We've been very diligent in whittling away our post-employment benefit costs and keeping those on a sound footing, and we need to continue on those kind of efforts. I could go on, but I'm not allowed to, so.
Thank you very much. Ms. Martinez?
Can you repeat the question?
I'd be happy to. What do you see as the top priorities for the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District? And why do you believe these to be priorities?
Yes, some of the top priorities that I feel would be important is definitely providing the support that our families need to be able to educate them on the new Common Core standards. Like my colleague, the other candidates have stated the importance of education, and that's what it's all about, is making sure that our students, our kids, get the education that they need. And with the new Common Core standards, I think it's important to be able to provide that support for our parents to have a better understanding, so that they can also work with their kids at home and see them moving along. As well as bringing up-to-date our technology, so we can be on the forefront and be competitive, and also renovating and updating our facilities, particularly the school sites, so that the students have the equipment that they need and that they're prepared and be able to compete in this market. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Day?
On my website, atrangmathministry.com, I mention four of my priorities, and the number one at the top of the list is the one that I think should be the priority of the Livermore Valley School District, and really the reason why I chose to run. And that is the successful implementation of the Common Core state standards, in specific, or to be specific, a successful curriculum. I think we all agree with the intent of Common Core, to improve the capacity of our students, and it's put out there for public consumption. And what I found, and what brought me out of the bush, so to speak, is that there's very little said about the, how difficult this is going to be. And I believe that the resources that I've developed over the last ten years can help successfully implement a curriculum that addresses Common Core state standards.
Thank you very much. Mr. Melendez?
Three priorities: students, student programs, and the school facilities where students come to learn. My thirty-four-plus years in education as a schoolroom classroom teacher, program coordinator, math science, resource teacher, working through a National Science Foundation grant in Los Angeles, has kept me just so focused on what we do with children when they come to school. The programs have to be there, top-quality programs, and we have a lot of them here in Livermore. They're just so awesome. The school facilities, we need to improve. Classroom labs and computer labs. But underlying these three priorities are retaining and hiring the best and highly-qualified teachers and administrators to run the schools and school programs, and at the same time, balancing the district money to meet the state's eight priorities and our own district priorities and the school and the local control and county plans. That would be three priorities that I would focus on.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. White?
Well, I think the basic premise of schools is that the children are safe when they're with us. The whole thing falls apart, the whole scheme of schooling, public education falls apart if the parents don't know their children are safe with us while they're away. And so, and we've come to realize more and more that means safety, not just whether the stairs are cracked or the carpet's torn, but the children need to be safe from everyone else at school. In Livermore, we've done a good job of rolling out the Common Core program. It's a solid academic challenge to the students and to the teachers to teach the Common Core. It's not a curriculum, it's standards and it's goals, and it's a new way for students to think and to learn. We also need to make some good steps to spend the supplemental money that we have wisely. This is money that comes, and is to be principally spent on students in poverty and English-language learners and foster children. So if we direct our money to bring them up to the standards and the expectations of children who are not in poverty and who already speak English, we will be money ahead on that one. We also need to hire the best teachers, provide them with materials that do their jobs effectively, and make cautious, effective, financially sound decisions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bueno?
Quickly, it's on that one. Quickly, we'll be looking to enhance and support our STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, improving our facilities to meet not just the appearance needs, some of this, but also the sustainability needs that we have, and also to enhance our arts and our athletics. We also need to explore ROP, both in the traditional sense of the trades, and to look more towards the technological side as well. You know, we're currently the home to two premier national laboratories, and yet we're not where we want to be in STEM. Those relationships are being utilized, and I think I can work to actually enhance those. We're also the home to the beautiful Bankhead Theater, as well as numerous vineyard venues. I think all of those could be used to enhance our kids that are going, that are art-bound and have those talents. We're also participants in E-Ball, which is the finest athletic league in Northern California. We're also home to premier sports teams, franchises, the highest concentration outside of New York City. I think that our schools are really good, and I think that we have an exceptional staff, but I think our schools could be great with some effort, and I'm willing to put in that effort.
Thank you very much. Mr. Heckman? Oh, you started? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
We could go around again. I'm sure we could all add.
Okay, the candidate starting the next round of questions is McKinley Day.
Okay, now, new question, number three. Opening my glasses. Question number three, what skills, expertise, and/or perspective do you bring to enhance the governance team? Yes, do you bring to enhance the governance of the governance team, the body that you will be sitting on? What skill? will be sitting on? What skills do you bring to that team?
I can give you highlights of my biography. Military veteran, six years radar technician, working with other sailors aboard the USS Enterprise repairing systems, radar systems, aboard the USS Kitty Hawk. I'm a graduate here, East Bay College up in Hayward. I have a master's degree in telecommunications, and three teachers' degrees. One of them, in particular, the technology education, and then the general subjects, and then general subjects with authorization to teach mathematics. I have taught here in the Livermore School District. I'm a math teacher. And then I got a calling to do my own individual thing, and I've been serving the residents. They contact me. I don't have to advertise, and it's been nonstop for the last 10 years. There seems to be a need for a competent math instructor. I teach all the mathematics, and in particular, these resources that I have, I think, would be absolutely vital to helping create a curriculum for Common Core state standards.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Melendez.
Being an educator for, like I said, 34-plus years on the ground, in the classroom, with three different districts. Started with New Haven Unified School District at James Logan High School. Taught middle school and elementary school in Los Angeles Unified for over 18 years, and that's where I got a lot of experience outside the classroom, running school programs like Title I, it was called then, and EL and ESL programs for second language learners. Got certificated for the GATE programs as a teacher also, so I saw that part of education. Was a GATE designated teacher for fifth graders. It's given me a lot of insights of the ups and downs of what happens in the classroom, all the pluses and the pitfalls. Also, as a high school teacher, and as a district area coordinator in Los Angeles, I was the accreditation team with the district. And the perspective of being realistic, I think, is being in the classroom, having contact with students for X number of years.
Thank you very much. Ms. White.
Well, first, I think I should point out that the governance team includes the five members of the board and the superintendent, so there's six members. And I must say, I've been there and I've done that for quite a number of years. I've worked with 19 governance teams, four superintendents, and hired three superintendents. And I'm still here, and some of them aren't. I bring experience to the board, and recently, I've been elected by the delegates to the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly to be on the Board of Directors from Region 7, which is Alameda and Contra Costa County. So from that experience, when I meet with the other directors, I hear ideas and how their programs are working in their district, and I get a lot of... Well, sometimes it's confirmation that we're doing the right things, and sometimes it's new ideas and suggestions of how we could improve.
Thank you. Mr. Bueno.
I'm going to try this microphone again. Well, I'm a third-generation immigrant, and I've seen struggle to succeed on a family level. My grandfather and grandmother, they immigrated here. He picked crops when he came. He went on to be a labor leader for 42 years for United Auto Workers. My father didn't speak any English when he came here and he started school. And he went on to have his own business, and he was able to provide for all of us. I was able to become a professional firefighter, and I held every operational rank that I promoted through the ranks. I ultimately served as the fire chief. I've been the president of the Alameda County Fire Chiefs Association. I've also been the chairman of the EMS section for the county. I currently serve on the St. Rose Hospital Board, and I've raised money for the past 25 years for many charitable causes. In the effort to just see how your family can succeed, my three sons, who I'm very proud of, going to school here, were all able to graduate from UCs, the first in our family to do so. I mean, that meant a lot to us. Education was something we've always focused on in our family, and we know that it's helped our family succeed. I think I bring a good perspective on what it means, and people call it the American dream, but our family's lived it, and that's why I want to serve here, so I can give that back.
Thank you very much. Mr. Heckman.
Could we review the question again?
Yes, I'd be happy to. What skills, expertise, and/or perspective do you bring to enhance the governance team?
All right. Basically, my skills include, I'm very good at analyzing situations. My background is actually in high-tech consulting. Many places I come into a new situation, look and see what things are going, being able to quickly resolve and analyze problems, and kind of understanding how they occurred in the first place. A lot of people skills, you know, working in foundations and parent groups. Just have the ability to listen to people, to see what their worries are, what their concerns are. That's really very important. And then, in identifying what needs to be done and making it happen is very important. Very loyal and persistent in the causes that I adopt. I'm absolutely fearless and relentless in making sure that they get done. Also, I guess, perspective is that even though I come from public schools, alternate type of system here, it's a really great reference point, comparing and seeing, you know, what's the best of both places and how can things work better. And that's what I think is really true, my connections as well as my perspective will bring great help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Runyon.
I think, first and foremost, I bring a perspective of having one child who went through the system and learned everything the very first time it was said by a teacher, and one child who needed to hear it over and over and over again. When you've got a GATE kid and a special ed kid, you get a lot of perspective on how different kids learn. And I think that has helped a lot in some of the decisions that we faced. I think another strength is finance. And I'm not sure how much the public really understands this, but when this latest downturn hit, we cut once. We cut deeply, and we cut once. And that gave so much stability to this district that other districts didn't have, that people weren't in fear every year that what are the cuts going to be this coming year? We cut to where we thought it would have to be to get through the downturn, and we did it. I mean, it's a miracle, because we didn't expect it to last as long as it did, but we did it. And that kept program together, because when you tell a teacher, this year you're going to teach this, and next year you're going to teach that, they have to repace and redo, it's very, very important. I have a degree in math, so I have some understanding of the math curriculum more than other areas. I've tutored kids in math, and that's given me mad respect for teachers. I can't tutor more than three kids simultaneously. So when I know that teachers are out there teaching 30, and sometimes even more, kids in a classroom, I just have very much respect for them and the work that they do every day.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
Yes. The skills that I feel that I will bring to our Livermore School Board, first of all, I was previously on the school board for Livermore in 2011, had the opportunity and privilege to serve our community. I am a US Army veteran, also being employed with the school district previously as a community liaison, working closely with the families and being able to listen to the families' needs and finding resources and solutions for what the needs were to be filled, is something that I consider a great skill, because I have had the opportunity and afforded me the opportunity to work closely with the kids, and also with the AT-RIS program that served the students of Livermore, including the Tri-Valley, where we ensured that they were employed, but yet focusing on academics so they could graduate, and either connecting them with a junior college or a four-year college, or putting them in a trade school. So ensuring their success and the importance of what it means for a youth that many of us would just have given up on, I had the opportunity to work closely as a program coordinator for AT-RIS program that served our Tri-Valley community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're on to question number four.
The candidate starting this round will be Ann White.
Okay, question number four. Ready?
Ready.
If elected, how do you plan to balance the needs of every group you will serve as a trustee? Want me to repeat?
You've got to be kidding.
In 30 seconds, or less, no. Just, you know, hit on one topic.
I have to balance on the things that are going to serve more children, more effectively, more of the time, and provide supports for those children that have special needs that can't be dealt with in the overall program. We can't do everything for everybody, but we sure try like the dickens to do that. My job is not to balance everybody else's needs, but my job is to discover what the needs really are, and not necessarily from the parents who have their own particular child in mind. I have all the children in mind, and I need to provide programs which will suit as many needs as we possibly can and fill in the gaps with special programs that Mr. Melendez talks about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bueno.
When you talk about balancing, sometimes it's problematic. I served a community of 145,000, had a special district that we had to address, had its own commission. I did it for an entire career. In addition, I was a labor leader for 13 years. I served on an executive board with a broad range of things. Something that I pulled away from my professional career is that when you serve the public, no voice is too small, but you have to have consensus to move forward. You can't be knee-jerk. You can't let the little voice steer it, but you have to listen. I've become a very comprehensive listener. I built my entire career on consensus, and that consensus carried on into putting in legislation that helped, you know, 250,000 professional firefighters nationwide. Most recently, I testified in Sacramento and passed the limousine safety bill after that tragic death on the San Mateo Bridge. I worked with the state senator to do that. I understand, and I've been a public servant my entire life, my entire adult life, so I understand the balance. And I just think it's about listening and then acting on what you hear after you build consensus.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman.
Yes. The question was, for what will I do to balance the needs of every group? Pretty much what I will do is to delegate that responsibility to Superintendent Bowers. That sounds kind of funny, but it's really true, is that as a board, you don't really teach the children or run the schools. The CEO or the superintendent does that, just as, you know, running the individual schools, I mean, especially the charter world, is the principal, is the captain of the ship. We certainly bring... So actually, balancing needs is not something that is... I understand it's important. I'm not sure exactly how myself would be doing that, because I really don't want to... I don't really believe in micromanaging, you know, the captain of the ships. But so what I will do is, once the needs are identified, and I always don't want to balance needs, I always want to propel the needs or set to provide help wherever I can, in order to lift their needs or to lift the education. And so that's kind of my philosophy, and that's what my response.
Thank you very much. Ms. Runyon.
Well, since there's really only time to answer it in one area, I'm going to stick with what I said is one of the skills that I bring, which is finance, that we've had the greatest change in the financial structure in California for schools since I was in high school back in 1978, when Proposition 13 went through and schools took an enormous hit. Now, we have the local control funding formula. And going forward, Livermore's relative position is going to improve substantially against our neighboring districts. And that means we are going to have to work really hard on prioritizing those funds. You know, everybody's going to want it. Every single group is going to want it, and our task is going to be to decide where it needs to go. And we're going to have to balance the needs of the employees versus program versus facilities needs. We're going to have to decide what the community will support and demand in terms of facilities. And we have to think about, is there anything that we're willing to give up to have something else be better? And those are just really critical questions that have to be answered. You know, one of the things that has surprised me this year is what happened with teacher pension funding from the state. You know, we knew that it was underfunded, but the state wasn't really giving us data to figure out how much it was underfunded. And I was shocked. I thought we might, at the outside, double our pension obligation to the state, but it ended up being substantially more than that. So we're going to have to figure out how we do everything else.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
Yes. I feel that for us to be able to provide a balance for the three groups, and the three groups, I would say, are our administration, our community, families, and the students, is by showing our support to the district. I think the district has a good pulse on the needs of the family, as well as the students that are in the classroom settings. And then we need to back them up. We need to be able to support them, and as they're looking for resources, to be able to fill those needs. And so I think that that would be... That's my response. And the best thing we can do is support our superintendent and the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day.
One way to satisfy the needs of constituents or anybody is first to find out what the needs are. I address several things that I think are the needs of this district at the website, AtrainMathMinistry.com. In particular, I think the district needs to develop a program of creating jobs for young students. Don't know if the district is aware, but the most need out in the public is to hire students that have background in computer coding. I came across a young man on a flight from Central America about two weeks ago. And this young man was about 18. And he's hired in Silicon Valley. And I think I would establish my website to allow parents to communicate with me their needs, and then I would go about using my resources to solve the needs.
Thank you very much. Mr. Melendez.
All of last year, there was a group of community members working on this one question, and there were at least 50 stakeholders working on the local control and accountability plan. And in there, you had community members representing all facets of our community. We had school representatives, union, district staff representatives, and the superintendent leadership team, all working to write a plan to meet the needs of all the students. And all that work now is going to lead us for the next eight years. So we look at that plan, as a trustee, I would look at that plan, and see that all the adjustments and tweaks and everything that we need to do to balance out the needs of everyone. And that's the way to go, I believe, is... Well, we have to, but there is a lot... And that's, and that's the way to go, I believe, is, well, we have to, but there is a lot of work done in that. And I'd just be continuing to look at that plan.
Thank you very much.
Now we're on to question number five.
The candidate starting this round of questions is Belia Martinez.
I'll read it slow. Number five, how do you plan to reach consensus, working as a team member, putting aside personal biases, pet projects, and any perceived personal agendas? Is that okay?
Quite a mouthful. I think for myself, if I'm elected as the board trustee, the important thing to do is to look at the vision that the district has as a whole, because that's what we're here for, is to support them and to ensure that the projects and the programs that they're wanting to implement are successful. I do believe that we need to have our input, but I think that we need to work collectively as a team on a board and as well as in conjunction with the district and the administration, all three groups. So for myself, I would say that I have done a very good job of doing that as previously experienced, working within the school district and looking, when I did work at a school site, what was it, the needs of that particular site, and how can we move forward to accomplish those goals? And that would be the same at a district level. So that's how I would move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day.
Can you repeat that question?
Yes. Question number five, how do you plan to reach consensus, working as a team member, putting aside personal biases, pet projects, and any perceived personal agendas?
Well, to be, to be honest with you, there's only one way to do that. And that's to be flexible in thought, be respectful, and then be willing to accept facts, but also don't, don't take the facts or the statements as truth. Verify before you sign on. Have ability to work with people. I've developed it through the years from various positions as president of the postal union, and even as, as an instructor, going into people's houses, finding out the needs of the students, and then creating an appropriate curriculum that addresses those needs. So basically, it's a character type of issue where you don't have self-interest. Those are not on the plate, and the overall objective is to make, come to an agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez.
As a board trustee, I would, would welcome to be part of the collaborative environment. It's so professional here in our district that I want to be part of that. As an individual, in order to be collaborative, I have to be open-minded and flexible, keep the students as the number-one purpose of serving on the board. And with that, everything else goes out the window. There's, there's no private agendas. It's our community's children that I'm, we're working for. One voice as an advocate for students and their education.
Thank you. Ms. White.
I think consensus is overrated. We're elected to make decisions. We can gather all the information from all the parties, and then we still make our decisions with the best, best prospects for the student at the top of the list. I think when you have consensus, you cut the tops off all the outstanding, awesome things you can do, and you don't fail terribly either, because you've just cut the top and the bottom off that curve. I was on the Strategic Plan Committee, however many years ago that was, and there were 35 of us. And one woman did not want rigor in the, in the basic statement, that we were going to have a rigorous education for our students. One woman kept rigor out of the, out of the strategic plan for the Livermore School District. I presented the challenge at the, when it was, came to the board table, and everybody wanted to go along with the plan of the 35. Well, on the other hand, after the majority has voted and the majority has been successful, Robert's Rule says that the minority, those who find themselves in the minority should, in a good, in a well-operating system, adopt the majority of the opinion as if it was their own. And that's what I've always been known to do.
Thank you. Mr. Bueno.
I worked in a, in a profession that was mission-critical, where it wasn't acceptable to have failures of any kind. You know, what we did is we protected lives and property. And here, the mission, and I'll paraphrase it because I have not read the exact mission, but it's to educate children so that we can produce contributing members of our society, caring people. You know, compromise is the obligation of the leadership, and we shouldn't compromise on the mission because of any personal agenda. I do believe in consensus, and I stick by that. I also believe that you shouldn't have, you know, paralysis by analysis. What you do is you narrow your committees, you give opportunities for selection to your best and brightest people, people who are selfless, and you will gain consensus. I know that with certainty. You can't let those obstacles of personal agendas stand in your way when you're trying to meet your mission. And I believe here, this is one of the most critical missions we have, is to produce good children. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman.
Oh, yes, thank you. I have to agree with Ms. White on the, we don't have to reach a consensus above all. I mean, we're all different people, and then the fact that people are more different on a school board, I believe, really enhances its value, not detracts from it. If you were all the same, you would all have the same consensus, but that would not always make things become better. Things become better when you argue about things. I think that you should definitely be able to have respect for other people and their points of view, understand where they come from when discussing things. I think there should be a more robust discussion. The Brown Act kind of makes people just kind of sit up here like frogs on a log and not really engage. That's kind of, I think you have to break through that. And then I think we always have to look at the roots. We're not really, we don't create law, we follow the law and implement policies. You have to look at the education code, and you have to look at the policies that, you know, previous board members have laid down. And if you can't reach, that's really a basis for voicing your opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Runyon.
I think disagreement is okay. I think how you disagree is really important. I think that you need to disagree from an informed viewpoint. It means you've studied the issue and come prepared to have a discussion and talk about why you're advocating for a particular position. And you need to do it with a measure of respect. You know, decorum is important. You don't get anything done when people are upset because somebody's yelling. And we've had that in the past. It's been a long time since it's happened, but in this community, that has happened. And it was very difficult to get things done when you have somebody screaming and pounding their fists on the dais. It just, it gets very difficult. But I also don't think there's anything wrong with having an agenda. And I'm going to give you an example. When I was president of the Education Foundation, I actually got up every morning and drove my son to Tracy High because they had International Baccalaureate Program in their high school. And when we learned about it, we thought it was a great program. And so I drove him over there. I came back. I worked on raising money for the Livermore Schools, and I went out and picked him up and came back. And I worked years and years and years behind the scenes to bring International Baccalaureate to Livermore because I believe in the program and the value of that program. And it's been incredibly successful. I'm hoping that it's going to be as successful in Granada High as it's been at Joe Mitchell. I think that we have the opportunity maybe to open an additional IB school, hopefully if we can find a credentialed Mandarin teacher, Mandarin as the language.
Thank you very much. The candidate starting this round of questions is Craig Bueno.
So we're on to question number six. Question number six, how would you involve the community in a positive way to actively participate in the comprehensive education of Livermore's children?
Well, excuse me?
How would you involve the community in a positive way to actively participate in the comprehensive education of Livermore's children? Is that better?
Yes. So if, if we have agreement that STEM and reduced class sizes and high school counselors and the arts are enhancements to education, and I believe we do, Measure G did just that. And our methods for engaging the public were to engage with the public. We went around and we talked with the PTAs, the PTOs, parent groups, held meetings at people's homes. We spent quite a bit of time on engagement. In an 87-day window, we were able to raise the funds, we got the backing, we exercised a successful campaign, we showed what the, what the benefits were. And what's really great about this community is we didn't have to convince people. We simply had to message. It was all about a communication piece, and communication is engagement. And we were able to do that successfully. We raised the money we needed, we passed it overwhelmingly, and people were very appreciative of it, in all aspects, professionals, the businesses. It was overwhelming how much we were able to attain in such a short window. But it was simply just through listening, and we were very well-received. And it's partially through that process and that engagement that the encouragement came from those people and as to why I thought I could maybe help out and do a little bit more here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Heckman.
Yes, to involve the community in education, well, one way is to increase homework load, but that would make them upset, or some upset. I think in some, I've known parents who think that kids should have more homework. But I think involved the community in education is really to promote the value that the school system has to the community. I mean, what effect does the schools have to do with, you know, making, raising our home equity to influence people to come and move to Livermore? I think that's a great area of improvement that we can do here in the schools. And I'm not just saying this from personal bias, from being the charterers, I think we need to involve the charter of public schools as well as the district. When you reach out, I know that hopefully we've learned in the past that when more we reach out and be inclusive, good things happen. Kind of, as the states where we're not involved is the year ago where the mayor and Terry Bradshaw talked about Livermore, and he talked about everything, you know, the labs, the downtown outlets, and the light bulb, but they didn't talk about the schools at all. And I'd like to change that. I think first, first goal would be get on that list, and the second goal would be to rank above the light bulb. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Runyon.
Thank you. I do agree with Mr. Bueno that we really just did that in a, in a large way with the parcel tax. And of course, that was the third parcel tax, and the third one that I have worked on. I think something really important that we did this year is the math night, that people are concerned about Common Core and what it means, and we're finding that even people who know how to do the subject matter themselves have difficulty with the way it's being presented now. So the answer is to engage with the community. You know, if, if we're teaching math using methods that are different, not the results that are different, but the process to get to them is different, we can't just explain it to the kids, because the kids are going to go home and sweat their homework, and they've got to have someone there helping them. And so either that's after school, and I do that on Mondays with my Rotary Club, Rotarians Enriching and Directing Youth. And that's a great way to do it, civic groups getting involved in community where the parent community isn't able to be as involved. And then having things like we did, where we brought in the same kind of people who educate our educators to then show the parents, okay, this is what your kids are being taught in school. So this is how you, you borrow across a zero, and, and things that parents may have forgotten, that it's important to refresh their skills so when their kids are sitting down sweating it, they know how to do it. That kind of engagement is really good. And of course, always on the finances, we're going to have to stay engaged with the community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Martinez.
Yes, well, I'd like to say that I see that the school district currently already has a very good track record with the partnerships that they've developed with the local businesses and corporations to be able to support various programs that they've implemented into our schools. And I'll give you a couple of examples. We've had the privilege of receiving grants from Kaiser to implement culinary nutrition classes that are being taught to parents, educating them the importance of nutrition so they in turn can educate their children better eating habits. And not only did they do it in a small scale, but they actually expanded it by, the, the program that they did was training the trainers. So they would train the parents, and then those parents were given assignments to go out and do outreach to other families and teach them as well. And then it would continue on, as well as having the Rotary folks come in and work with our students, including the Livermore Lab folks that come in for math counts. So we have a very good relationship with our community leaders and businesses and volunteers that are willing to come in. And so we're currently doing that, and I applaud our district for doing that. And I would say we need to continue those relationships. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Day.
You know, different communities kind of develop their own personality and identity. And one thing I noticed, living here in Livermore, is that this is a community of the arts. If anybody attended the Tuesday Tunes phenomenon out there in front of Bankhead, I mean, you see, the diversity that's presented is overwhelming. You'll see Latino heritage, you'll see rock, you'll see soul, classical, opera. I support visual arts, music, and performing arts curriculum. And having a background as a wedding photographer, piano player, a singer in a church choir, if I'm elected, I would work to ensure that elements of the arts are included in the framework of the curriculum or the Common Core state standards.
Thank you very much. Mr. Melendez.
Involving the community, and this wonderful community of Livermore, we can see how, when there is a need, the community supports us, past two measures, the facilities tax. But we also need to reach out to the community, and I agree with Ms. Martinez, and offer parent trainings perhaps, especially like on the implementation of the Common Core standards in the classroom. Give examples, maybe have workshops at school sites as part, get on PTA or PTO agendas and say, look, we need 20 minutes, and if any parents have questions and have people there to answer them, gauge them for understanding. The business community, I'll reach out for them frequently. When I did attend a few, the Hispanic business consults, I always tried to get on their agenda and said, look, there needs to be a relationship, a partnership with these businesses and schools, and this is how you can do it. And I'd bring in some guest speakers on that topic. Electronic media, and the example that I have is when they first came out, the Common Core standards, a middle school principal started sending out little blurbs on their website. And I thought that was a wonderful idea, so I thought, you know, I just mentioned it to other people, and it didn't, it didn't happen. But there was... But there's, is a great opportunity for the electronic, you know, websites at schools to engage and involve the community in our efforts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. White?
Well, I think education is Livermore's middle name. I had a trustee in a neighboring district, not near neighbor, but in the county, who said, how do you pass all these parcel taxes? What's special about Livermore? I said, why don't we ask the city manager? I know from a school perspective, but she might have a broader perspective. And she said, education is all Livermore thinks about. So, there's some truth to that, that it's just the way we are in Livermore. To involve the community more, it's no secret that I wish we had, we would have more people involved as we update the LCAP. We got school leaders to do that, and that was great. But I think having more opportunity for parents to participate in and contribute to what they think are their needs, that the LCAP monies would solve, I think would be useful. As Mr. Heckman said, I think, maybe not, it's a long time, until the, you know, the mayor has the state of the city, and he talks about it, and he talks about, but he doesn't talk about school. I think our next ploy would be to have a state of the schools. And I don't think we should rely on the Chamber of Commerce to offer it. I think we should have it and do it ourselves. And just as the mayor presents the state of the city, our school board president should report the state of the schools. Let the community know that we are alive and thriving and just how much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bueno?
Oh, you started, sorry.
Okay. The candidate starting the final question is F. Rain Melendez.
The final question. Question number seven. Please take your last minute and a half to tell us what you believe are the educational highlights for our Livermore children. You can take that wherever you'd like it to go.
Well, I think there are numerous ones to mention, but since a lot of this is our focus is STEM, I think that's one of the biggest programs and the most promising programs in our district we should offer for all our students. The fact that we have a wonderful roadmap to, for career and technical education and our ROP program that we support is another highlight. Right now, I just, there's so many things that I can, that I can't really say or state right now. But I just want to say that if students are successful, you know, that's the highlight, no matter what program they're in, what club they're in. And just knowing that we have so many students that go on to colleges and career ed, technical fields and be successful is, I think, is our biggest highlight.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Okay. I think in Livermore, we focus on providing opportunities for students, all varieties of students. We offer different schools. We offer K-5 schools, 6-8 schools, K-8 schools for dual immersion, K-8 schools for IB. We offer project lead the way up and down the K-8 spectrum. And I, we offer, I know people don't think it's an opportunity, especially because we've had the block plan for so long. But I think we've got an innovative staff that is ready to consider time as a variable in the high school program. Where else can you take five years of a foreign language? Where else can you start nearly your junior year and be ready for college algebra, college math, to go to college at math? This new opportunity to do online credit recovery is awesome. I mean, you don't really need to take all of history again if the only reason you failed was because you messed up on one test, so that you know that material and move on. We have science camp for our fourth and fifth graders, technology for student use up and down the curriculum. And we passed Measure L. Sometimes I think we neglect to remember Measure L. We have our libraries at our elementary schools because we passed Measure L in 1999. We, the Livermore library was born before that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bueno?
The three, just narrowed accomplishments, just if they were itemized, I would say would be STEM, the arts, and athletics. Three things that we're doing good, but we're looking to do great, and they're all within our reach. There's some values, you know, that we also have embraced and I became familiar with while working with the school. Critical thinking, creativity, communications, and collaboration. And then there's a fifth one, and it's citizenship. And working at the school six to seven days each week, you know, even on Saturday mornings we're there, we noticed something. And until last night, Dr. Dunlop brought it up when it started and did real simple math in my head, and I thought, and I explained it to him. I said, well, last year's class that we had of, you know, football players that came through were the most polite young men we'd ever seen as a staff. And we didn't know what to attribute it to. When you do the simple math, it was upon the implementation. And if you follow it through, it's just how to act in public and shaking people's hands and just being good people. And we've seen the results of it. I don't think you can overlook it, and I think making good citizens should be one of our goals.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
Yes, definitely one of the highlights that I've noticed within the district was the implementation of the Restorative Justice Project by Mr. Vinoi. I spoke with him at the last meeting a little bit about that. It was kind of depressing watching these district meetings because the first thing we'd do was expel a lot of children. And I felt really bad about that, throwing them out on the street. I noticed that that has gone down a lot from seventy-five per year to right now about two a year. It's always look at the highlights of, you know, the excelling athletes and smart kids. But really, in making a difference, it's good to see what you do to the other kids. Other highlights I'll just talk about from my experiences more than charterers, that we do have a parent choice here in Livermore. I think the competition helps drive the best in all of us. I know the high school, we actually have a lot more special education than the K-8 does, but still, the focus is on graduating children with an A- to G requirement. I think that's very important. I would like to see a parent choice expand here in Livermore. I don't think it's a zero sum game. We have parents from Pleasanton and Dublin coming to our high school. And I think we could increase the value of the schools, the community, increasing the number of jobs. And so, we're entertaining our schools to increase and embrace a parent choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Runyon?
I kind of feel like you've asked me which one of my children do I prefer. But I do want to say a couple of things. I'm very proud of the schools that we have here, but I can't tell you how proud I am of this community and the way that it pulls together to support our kids. When we talk about the initiatives of the last few years within our school district with people outside of Livermore, they can't believe that we've been working on implementing new programs and new things in the midst of the biggest downturn since the Great Depression. But, you know, we went into it with an attitude of some things don't cost money, right? Some things you can just do well with the resources that you have, and you can't just throw up your hands and say, oh, woe is me, we've got an economic downturn because the kids that are in school now don't get a second chance at their education. And I just can't tell you how important that attitude has been. And it started at the top and percolated through the whole community. Everybody believed that we could still do great things for our kids with the money we had available. We were going to put on the best darned programs that we could. And I'm very proud of what we've done, and I'm desperately proud of all our employees who hung in there with us through the downturn and worked so hard for this community. And I'm proud of the community for the way that they've pulled together and supported bonds and three partial taxes and donated money. And, you know, community groups have stepped up and said, we're going to fill the gaps where we can.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Well, I believe that our district has a very, a lot of programs that we already have, or they've implemented, starting with the STEM program, the bilingual program, the international baccalaureate. But one of the things I want to point out too is that they looked at the schools, for example, with Delby High School, where there was a need for students that didn't have the opportunity for other elective choices for class programs. And so, they implemented a culinary program where now they give them a choice for those that are interested and can prepare them for life skills and a career that they can actually bridge into after high school. So, that's one of the things that I really applaud our district for is looking at the needs at the various schools, various high schools that we have, and realizing that they're not all the same. And each high school, each school has different needs and looking for ways to be able to fill those. And they partnered up with the corporations like Chevron to be able to get donations for the kitchen equipment and get grants from Kaiser for cooking instruction and so forth. So, one of the things that I want to leave you with is that as long as our district continues to have that vision and reaching out to the community to involve them, we can continue, as Ms. Runyon said, there are things that do not cost money that we can involve others and make things happen collectively as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
You know, I'm a good one to make a compare and contrast because I've worked in some of the worst situations in education. I worked in juvenile delinquency facilities up in San Leandro, Title I schools in Bay Area Point, no resources, community fracture. Then I came to Livermore. First week, the math, the head of the math department came into my room, gave me $200. What's this? She said, we know every teacher spends their own money, which we do, you know, for supplies. So, this is our teacher fund. She actually had a fund for teachers to help teachers. The highlight, I was shocked because I had never been in a district that had resources that they were providing. That was a highlight right off the bat. I took the money. Thank you. Because I was spending money. That was a highlight for me. You got excellent teachers, most are credentialed, your API scores above average, filled with family, you're family oriented. This community is not a fractive. You have good moral values. The location, couldn't ask for a better location. And if you have a diamond, you want to make sure it keeps shining. That's why I'm here.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for answering our questions, candidates. We'd like to take a little time. There's not many of you in the audience, but we would like to open up for question and answer. We originally had thought we'd have you guys write down on an index card. You're welcome to do that, or if you're comfortable, I think it would be appropriate for you to stand, address one or several of the candidates, and ask your question. So, I'd like to open up. Does anybody have a question for our candidates? Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Thanks for showing up.
Thank you. Aw, come on.
Good show, you guys. Did a very good job. I'm happy to have seen all the great answers. But here's my question. Considering the existing district board policies on bullying, what would you change, add, or implement to make this policy current and more successful?
Did it?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Let's see, we, did everybody go once? Everybody went once, and last was Mr. Day. So, just draw again, yeah.
Okay. The candidate with, starting to answer this question will be Belia Martinez.
First of all, I'd like to say that I do see that our district has great policies for anti-bullying, and they've done several programs where they've come into our schools and actually invited guest speakers and done fun things for events for our students to be able to get that message and grasp the understanding, the importance of being anti-bully and working together and being good citizens. One of the other things that I would like to see and already has been in the works is the Restorative Justice Program that other districts around us are using. And it's been very effective where it involves having the student that's being bullied and the one that's bullying come together and so that they learn how to work through the issues, as well as having a committee that also works collaboratively together. And it's a pretty extensive program, but it's very effective, and that is something that I would like to see brought to our school district.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
The first part of the question? Can you repeat the question, Mr. Rogie?
And that was the policy on?
Bullying.
Bullying. I had to deal with that. And we decided to pull, to pull the kid out of the high school. It was that bad. And we homeschooled him. You know, I saw one district, the way they handled bullying issue was to take classes to areas like the juvenile delinquent facility in San Leandro and let them talk to people who either engaged in bullying and suffered the repercussions. So, I don't know if you have a policy of field trips, but I would like to organize field trips where students in this district, because they do it and maybe don't understand the impact, well, let's let them see the other side of it and let it hit them right in the face. And let them see where it winds up.
Thank you very much. Mr. Melendez?
Well, I totally support the zero tolerance policy that we have in our district. It's not going to be allowed. First, identify the problem and then attack it with the resources we have. What we have now is starting at elementary schools, the character ed programs need to be a little, perhaps enhance, maybe put some resources at it to add what bullying does, what it is, so kids will know when they're being bullied and when, to develop citizenship, know what's right and wrong. Of course, that starts at home. Sometimes it doesn't attach. So, we need programs and totally support the elementary programs that are out there right now. Goes all the way through middle school and high school. But certainly research what's out there and see what has been successful at school with cyber bullying and physical and sexual bullying, that type of thing, and then bring it to our district if necessary.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Well, I'm delighted to say that the Restorative Justice Program has been included in our LCAP, so there seems to be funds directed toward that. And we also do character counts, which some of, helps to point out the good things that people can do rather than the nastiness of bullying. First, we also need to train the adults to be careful, the adults at school to be careful observers so that they can see it. It would be so easy for an adult to look the other way, and that shouldn't happen. At one point, I saw a workshop on an anti-bullying program called Not in My School. And it points out that there's three people, three people involved in bullying, the bullier, the bullied, and the bystander. And at these schools that have the Not at My School program, any one of the, well, the bullier would not say it, but the, either one of, anybody on campus can say, not in my school. And it brings on this whole vision of the training that the school has had, that they... they, they're, they're pointing out the bullying, they're saying, "Cut it out," and they're saying, "We're on to you," to the bullier. And it's just a code word. You don't have to say, "Johnny, stop it." You just say, "Not in my school." And the, everybody catches on to the message. You know, that's one of the things that we could adopt. And I, I learned recently that middle school is the prime age for bullying to begin.
Thank you. Mr. Bueno?
Unfortunately... I definitely have a bad mic. Unfortunately, it's reported nationally that about one-third of all school-aged children are involved in bullying, either as the bully, or being bullied themselves. And a lot of it's with horrific results, you know, I mean, some of these kids resort to terrible things. I think the district has done a good job of moving forward on this. As someone who is an observer in the schools, and has gone through all the school training as an observer to look for bullying and what to see, and, and as the father of three children who went through this school, three boys who went through, it's rough for kids. But what I can say is that prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I think that going at the cause of it, building good citizens, like we are, is the best, it's the best cure that we're going to see. Definitively, kids today, and I've been working in the schools for years now, they're better today than my generation. And as someone who worked, you know, with men and women professionally, in a, in a live-in environment where you're there 24/7, I can tell you, and hiring these young men and women to come into the profession, they're better people. And, and it's society doing a better job of raising better people than we were. And, and it's working. We're doing a very good job. You just need to continue monitoring it, and improve it as necessary, but not to change it for the sake of changing it. If you're doing a good job, just watch.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
Yes, I'm actually not very familiar with the, the board policy on bullying. I would assume it pertains to children. Parents sometimes gang on each other, that I've seen. And as parents, we have to realize that our children are always watching us, and they're always learning, not always when you expect, but when they, when they, when they expect. I know that today, I think is, today is actually National Blusher Bullying Day, or something, but it, it does happen, though. I think it's more than a third, I think it's near all, in some cases, my, my point of view. Again, I think a lot of, has to do with communication with the parents. What is your kid doing? How's he feeling? Because it could be bullying, could be other things. I know that it's, you know, as a parent, I want to know what's happening with my child, and I want to know how he's doing. Kind of a common sense policy I'd like to see is, within all schools, is making sure that school loop, or power school, or whatever it is, is up to date. I want to know if my kid is, is late somewhere. I want to know if their grades drop suddenly, or something like that. I want to know now, I don't want to know two weeks from now, or whatever it is. And that's what I think would be a great policy, and communicate with parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Runyon?
I'm going to show my age a little bit, and say, the, the program that I want to talk about, I can't come up with the name of it, but we have a program in our elementary schools that teaches, beyond the character counts program that people have already talked about, that teaches kids skills in taking turns, and engaging with other students, and especially targeted to kids who've had difficulty. I would love to see that in each and every one of our elementary schools. That's something that we have not, in the past, been able to fund at each one of our schools. But if somebody in the back can help me, what's the name of that program? Kid Connection, thank you. Sometimes, you know, you desperately want a name, and it just won't come. I also want to agree with Mr. Bueno. I, I think that the impact of character counts as the kids have aged through the system is profound. And, and I think it's important that we do address it head-on, and the best thing to do for bullying is to stop it before it starts. And, but that doesn't mean that you ignore it if, if instances happen, we count on our staff to do that, and, you know, you can, you can write all the policies you want, but how it gets implemented is what really matters, and, and I think that's crucially important. Something that surprised me that we've done more recently, because I'm not a professional educator, right? I came as a, a parent and a volunteer, and got into this position. But this year, we did the online training, along with the rest of the employees, put on by our liability insurer, and I thought it was excellent. And I learned a lot, and I think making that available to all the members of the community, the, the coaching staff, everybody, I, I doubt it would cost much more than what we're paying now to have it available to anybody who wanted to take it. I'm sorry, I went a little over.
Hey, thank you very much, candidates. Are there any other questions in the audience? Yes?
Hang on. I got these heels on.
What do you see the role of charter schools in Livermore Valley? Was that for all the, all the candidates? All the candidates? Okay. Are we okay for one, we're still on time? We're good? Okay. So, let's draw a name. Okay. Candidate that'll start this question is Kate Runyon.
Okay. I, I think we have two charter schools. I think that's the role, is they exist, and, and I really don't have much to say beyond that.
Hey, Ms. Martinez?
I would have to agree with Ms. Runyon. We have the two charter schools, and I think it does provide option for the families that choose, you know, if they want to have their children in charter school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
Was that question pertaining to supportive, or?
I'm not sure. Just, what is their opinion? What is, just what is your opinion of charter schools in the?
I've worked in charter schools also in Oakland. I like charter schools, because they tend to be a little bit more flexible in their approach to curriculum, and, and offer some alternatives that a public school either can't, or won't, won't offer. Program, like the charter school here that you have, the Livermore, one of the programs it offers is the performing arts, a real rich program, where the students actually get to, to create and get involved in production of, of plays, four times a year, I think. And I had one particular homeschool young girl teaching math, but her interest was in the arts. And she couldn't get it at the, the middle school. So, any charter school that's as well-regarded as the, as the one here in, in, in Livermore, I'm for supporting, yeah.
Sorry, Ms. Melendez?
Charter schools, again, is another example of how the community perceives a need. They'll work together to bring it to Livermore. It is choice, with some parents. It's very interesting to, well, for me, to see how, now that we have oversight directly, the district has oversight aspects of the charter school, there's a partnership or relationship growing there. And it can be a positive thing.
Ms. White?
Well, the origins of our charter school were not very friendly. But as Mr. Melendez says, with the oversight that we have now, we were able to ask more, answer more of the community's questions about the charter school, and how it's, how it's managed, and at least be aware of what's going on there. When the state supervised it, oversaw it, whatever the word might be, we weren't able to answer our community's question. Now we can do that. And it does certainly provide an option. Though sometimes I'm not real clear what the, what the options are.
Thank you, Mr. Bueno.
Hard time with this thing. The, the role of the charter schools, I believe to be the same as any school here in Livermore, and that's to educate our children, to produce productive members of society. I think that, you know, I'm, I was unaware of anything that happened in the past, and when I went around as a Measure G person, looking to gain support, I happened to talk with the parents at the charter school. People were very engaged, and I think a lot of the, the improvements that have come are as a result of the inclusive, forward-thinking of our superintendent, who looked to push funds and include them, and these are Livermore children. That's what we're here for. That's what our schools are for, and that's to educate Livermore children.
Thank you very much. Mr. Heckman?
I'm definitely for them. My kids go to there. And I think they bring great value to the community. There's, the flexibility does allow a lot more dollars to reach the classroom. They have a lot less higher administrative. It's a way of attracting families to Livermore. As I said before, we have parents from Pleasanton and Dublin coming to our school, charter schools. This in turn is, you know, would greatly increase, like I said, our community's, the value of the school, entire school system, to the community. I view charter schools, whether they're charter or district, as part of the LBJUSD system, and that's the kind of worldview I will have going on. I, like I said before, I think that the charters would, could be, there is room for expansion, and I don't think it is a zero-sum game, where some teacher loses their job when another one is created. As I said, it's a way of, of bringing parents here to Livermore. It's not a zero-sum game. And I would, and then, kind of conclusion, we really talk about the Vergara decision, which is the, the tenure abolition, which I think will be upheld. Charter, charters are independently, differently run, and not as a choice for parents, but as a choice for teaching professionals as well. And in the long run, your best protection is the ability to walk across the street to a competitor. I'd say that from, from the high-tech point of view, and it'll bring value to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more question? We have time for one more question. Here we are, right in the front.
Yes. What do you, I really, this is hard to get in a minute and a half. What do you think are the greatest strengths and weaknesses of the Common Core program?
Okay. Candidate that will start this question is Craig Bueno.
I am not an expert on the Common Core, but I have read of it, and I've talked with a lot of parents about it. It's one of those things that's being driven from the state, and we're on the third year, and it's fully implemented. So I looked at it, and, because a lot of the parents that I heard said they can't teach their children, they're having a hard time. So I looked at some of the things, the critical thinking, I looked at some of the math objectives. And I am a little older, and I did go through school a long time ago in the 60s and 70s, and it was very much like many elements were, as I was taught. So if parents are having a hard time with it, you know, the school, you know, helping the parents learn, I, I think will be a key element to its success. It's here, and what I've suggested to parents, that it's here, and is with any other large problem. If, if you believe it's a problem, then let's change it where it needs to be changed. But right now, it's a solution. And I, I think that the, the things that I've seen, sir, that looked the best, was the critical thinking aspect of it. The group effort, and the basis on nonfiction, going to, going towards, you know, nonfiction, fact-based knowledge, those seem to be strengths. And the weakness that I see is the unfamiliarity and the struggle that some people are having with it, in order to help their children achieve with it.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
Yes, I am running for the school board, but no, I cannot do anything about the Common Core. The, the strengths of it, actually, my father was in the Air Force, moved around a lot, and there was always a jumble of different curriculums and things. And what's the strength of it is, if you do move around, you kind of are in the same place, no matter where you go, hopefully. That's one of the goals. It does require, we looked at tests on, you know, on Facebook, and they look kind of funky, but they do kind of measure how a child really understands things, as opposed to kind of memorize them, which they immediately forget the summer. That's kind of a strength. Now, the weaknesses are, you know, it is just a base curriculum. And one of the dangers is, oh, we'll just take Common Core, and that's it. And I really think that you really need to build a curriculum that goes beyond that, to be, you know, an exceptional school district. And, and the weakness, you know, it's just, the weak, again, the weakness is the trap that that won't happen. Thank you.
I, I think, frankly, the biggest weakness is, it's new, right? I mean, when we do something new in the schools, you have to have training on it, you have to repace, your, your lesson planning has to be redone. There's a, there's a lot of activity that it requires. People can't just teach a subject they know, and continue to teach it well, and get good results. We have additional requirements. Now, there's a reason for that. And the reason for that is, too many kids were coming out who could grind through, say, a math problem in algebra, but they had no idea how that related to the real world. And, you know, at least in math, that's one of the things that Common Core is really trying to deal with. You know, the flip side of that is, when you put more emphasis on one thing, you're taking less emphasis on another. And one of the things that people fear has less emphasis is the rote memorization of math facts. And you need ready recall, you're not going to be able to factor an algebraic equation if you don't recognize the relationships between the numbers. So that's definitely a weakness. A, a strength, I think, is inclusion of nonfiction, right? That, for a long time, the English language arts has been all about fiction, and that's not what most people need when they go on into the working world. They need to be able to write for clarity, not for rich language. They need brief, direct kind of language that can be understood easily by anyone. And biographies, I, I'm out of time, but there are a lot of strengths, there are a lot of weaknesses, but it doesn't matter, because we didn't make that choice, it was implemented.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Yes. So, one of the, my perspective on one of the items that I see that is a strength, is having our children learn to work through their education, for example, as Ms. Runyon pointed out, with math, that they can actually learn different approaches to come up with a solution, and not have it where you just memorize, and this is the only way, because it isn't. And that, I see it firsthand with my own children, that they're being taught various methods to come up with the same solution, so that it fits this need of the student, because all students learn differently. Including allowing them to have the opportunity to learn with, using project-based approach. And that's important, because it gives the student the opportunity to express in their way of learning, and being able to still obtain the information that they're required to. And again, the weaknesses, I would say, because it is so new, that we are all learning together as parents and community, but we also need to continue to remember, to keep it inclusive, and continue to educate our parents, as well as our kids, so that they, we know how to help them, when they come to us at night for homework assignments and say, "How do I do this?" And providing resources, being able to say, there is resources where you can go online and get some, you know, background, more so, for example, using Khan Academy, or different programs that are available to our parents, so that they can help, because, you know, for some of us, it's been a long time. And we do need to get that refresher, of course, so that we can step in and help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
Well, sir, I'm glad you asked that question, because that, Common Core hits to the core why I'm here. The strengths are widely known, and I guess we are all, we'll sign on for the strengths of it. Basically, to make kids college-ready or career-ready. But, No Child Left Behind started out with good publicity, and we know where that wound up. Now that's out the back door, and through the front door, Common Core is coming. On my website, atrangmathministry.com, what I did, research, offered to the community, at least seven categories, strengths and weaknesses. You go to that, you'll find out all you need to know, both sides of the coin. What concerns me the most is, no one is talking about the weaknesses. And so, I'm concerned that if implemented wrong, you know, there's already four to six states that have abandoned Common Core, 10 are in the mix to mitigate it. There are a lot of weaknesses that I would like this community to know about, and then, from the aspect that if we know about the weaknesses, we can go about implementing it correctly. And that information is on my website.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez?
One of the greatest strengths is that it's for all students. It's, it's a, it's a roadmap for quality education, and education for the 21st century. Starts at Kinder, goes 12th grade, and... Starts at kinder, goes 12th grade, and now with post-secondary education, the UC, the Cal system, and the community colleges' systems have all signed in on this, knowing that that's what is needed for our students to, to be successful. It's no longer just for gate or high-achieving students. The idea that it is not for everyone, that's, that's the greatest strength. It focuses in on what students need to learn, but also how they need to learn it and apply it, like Ms. Runyon said. That's extremely important. How does it relate to life in general, from a first grader all the way to a 12th grader? The weakness is that it, if it's not supported adequately or implemented at a school site, that, I think, is, would be the greatest weakness. We need staff development for parents, we need staff development for teachers, we need people to get on board in understanding this, whether they agree with it or not, but, and change the environment of the, of the classroom. And so, that's maybe a possible weakness in it.
Thank you. Lastly, Ms. White?
The Common Core was invented by the Governors Association. And they were trying to create a state of standards in the country, which would meet the international standards that foreign schools have. And when the feds got wind of it, they decided they would make adopting Common Core part of the criteria to get some Fed money. That's why it's become so universal, because people wanted to be eligible for the, and it was the states that were to adopt it. I think everything, everybody said quite a lot about it. It does give an opportunity for critical thinking, requirement for critical thinking, not just an opportunity. Perhaps it will rescue us from having a curriculum that is a mile wide and an inch deep. We might have more depth and less breadth than this. On the other hand, the people that have criticized it, to me, have been very nonspecific. It doesn't have some amorphous thing. When you talk about, when they ask, finally ask, well, what is it lacking? And I say, "Is that in the current books?" And the three things that I've had to deal with on that issue are not in the current books. And I'm not gonna elaborate, 'cause I've only got about 12 seconds left. But if you would like to see what the students will, will experience in their test-taking, I suggest you go to SmarterBalanced, not, not anything that sounds like whipped butter, but smarterbalanced.com, I believe. Maybe it's .org, help? And, and, try one or the other. And you can choose to take tests of math or English Language Arts in various grade levels, so see how you would do on some of those tests.
Thank you very much. And please, audience, join me in thanking our candidates again for a wonderful forum. Thank you so much. And, audience, thank you for coming. I hope that our questions that the four of us came up with, and some other members of PCIC, that they addressed your issues and your questions. The candidates have left, a few of the candidates have left some material on the table right outside the door, and I'm sure you all have, I know it's posted on, where is it posted? On the AC.gov site, all your email addresses, and everything where you can go if you want to send more questions to these candidates. I'm sure they'd be happy to communicate with you. Please feel free to do so. Thank you again, and we wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.